In city council meeting Wednesday, February 14th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in City Hall Council Chambers. At this time, we'll call Pastor William Sally of the Worship of the Church at Bradenton forward to give our prayer and then we'll do the invocation.
Pledge.
Pledge, invocation and pledge.
Good morning, Council. Thank you for your service. Thank you today. Excuse me for what you will be doing today for our community. So appreciative of you. I want to pray just what Paul would say to the Ephesians. I feel like that is appropriate for you. So let's pray together. Got to thank you for this council and I pray that everything that has taken place today will be of peace and of love and of sound mind. I thank you, Lord, for just what you called them to do. It is no easy task to love and to serve sacrificially. You reminded us in your word that we are to stand firm, to stand strong. And so I pray today that as we love and make decisions based on what is best for our community, that you would allow us to see that through our salvation in you, through righteousness that comes from you. Our feet is fed it, feeded with the readiness that comes from the gospel of peace, that we would be shielded by our faith, that we would remember our salvation and that your spirit would dwell mightily here today. And it is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
All right, and before we start the pledge, I would just like to to recognize a gentleman that served in World War II for us that passed away, Paul Force, and his do this pledge in his honor because there's not many World War II veterans left and all those veterans that passed, but especially one that lives in our community. So let's say our pledge in honor of what he did for our country and the few World War II veterans that are left. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call this, thank you, Pastor. We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
The first item on the agenda today is a presentation by Realize Bradenton.
All right, come forward. And who do we have the pleasure of here today?
Good morning. I am Karen Corbin, the Executive Director for Realize Bradenton. And we are at 1015 Manatee Avenue West in Bradenton. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come in and talk to you today. I'm here to give you a quarterly update of everything Realize Bradenton for our first quarter. I will share with you that it probably was one of the busiest quarters that we've ever had, but very successful, very exciting. Okay, let's, there we go. As you know, we bring people together. In the first quarter, we brought a lot of people together. So starting with our public market, which starts the first Saturday of October, goes for 35 weeks. Our goal has been to increase attendance at the market. As you can see, last year's average attendance was 3,100 attendees. We have intentionally added market activities to increase attendance. So far this season, we have held Halloween. It was a special at the market. We had Mayor Santa and First Lady Claus and their elf. Thank you very much. Also, we have added a youth booth for entrepreneurs under the age of 18. That's free to them. These special promotions at the market have resulted in substantial increases of attendance. This has been a catalyst of larger numbers, even on the weeks where we don't have any special activities. For the past three Saturdays, we have exceeded 4,000 attendees at the market. It has grown exponentially this year. So exciting. I will tell you that we are on track to far succeed our goals. And I also will share with you that the reason for that is it has been intentional. It's a very robust marketing plan of which I can only attribute to Andrea Kneese, who is sitting here in the audience. She is our marketing director and she is killing it. I know that many of you attend the market. You may have noticed a steady increase in full-time vendors. You may find it interesting that we intentionally leave room for 10 to 15 vendors, part-time vendors, that aren't there every week. This creates a variety at the market that brings people back regularly. It also gives us the ability to give complimentary space to other local nonprofits. A great deal of our thought and time goes into publicizing the market. Our market manager puts an amazing amount of thought into placement of the vendors to keep the flow of shoppers moving and highlight each vendor. Also, not duplicating vendors who sell exactly the same thing has been very successful. What is unique to the Bradenton market is that we have created a camaraderie among our vendors. That's highly unusual. That's very competitive type of atmosphere. They've named themselves. We did not think of this. We are not taking credit. They're calling themselves frienders, not vendors. It's pretty interesting. So our market is out going well and we're excited. We will also have the summer market again this year, three times. It'll be the second Tuesday, June, July and August. Second Saturday, June, July and August. So moving on, because we weren't busy enough doing that, we had another very successful Blues Fest. Got that in the record books. I saw so many of you there. Thank you so much for attending. I hope you all had a great time. The weather was perfect and it really was a beautiful day with the new lawn. The new forever lawn really made a difference in what the event kind of felt like and looked like. And I thank you all for that. Attendance numbers were down. However, that was a trend throughout the country, throughout 2023, that we had been monitoring and we knew, we saw that coming. We received many compliments for changing the ticket system from buying tickets to get food to just doing the transaction with all the vendors. I had a lot of happy customers. One of the highlights of the event, and some of you may or may not have been able to see this, was we had a young man come to us, a deaf son of the leader singer in the last band, who had never experienced his father's singing through sign language. And he really wanted us. He asked us if we would consider doing that. So we did. We went and we found these two amazing women who have a small business that's, you know, it's their art and their talent and they can, they can come and do that. And we also allowed them to bring 30 other herring impaired people who have also never experienced a concert of that type through sign language. It really was moving and it went over extremely well. People loved it. Overall, the whole day was a great success. So this was the first year that Realize Bradenton managed Winter Wonderland. I want to thank Mary Ann and her family for answering a countless amount of questions that we had in order to get this going. I also, Mary Ann, helped program the stage and she helped, she didn't help. She emcee'd the night and I don't know what I would have done without you. So thank you very much. The word people used throughout the evening was magical. From our beautiful ballerina, whoops, I forget. Oh, there she is, right there.
Amber helped you, I think, there.
She's always got my back. To Santa and the sleigh. So many pictures were taken in front of that great antique fire truck. And of course, there was snow. For Realize Bradenton, the event came alive because of our amazing collaborations with partnerships. Special thanks to our volunteers, the J R O T C from Manatee High, the Key Club from Manatee School of the Arts. And then there were our cultural partners, the Bishop with their incredible telescope, the Pirate Marauders with Marty, which was in the whole cool Santa suit. Library and Bat City Comics presented Storytime. And the last but not least, the De Soto Society for letting us the sleigh for Mr. Santa. The night was hugely successful for so many levels and we were able to accommodate over 5,000 people we got down there that night. So the numbers were really good. We had no idea what to expect. So next. Okay, whoever has control. We are excited to have Music in the Park back at the pavilion this season. The free concerts will feature a variety of local musicians and provide local food. In the past, we have seen roughly 1,500 people at the concerts and anticipate that attendance trend to continue to grow. If you want to see the lineup, go to realizebradenton.com. It's going to be a fun year.
Karen, and I know on Music in the Park last year it was during the remodel time, so we had to have it music in the amphitheater. But the job that your staff did during that time, because my wife and I think we missed one, but we had something that night. But we went to all of them and it was unbelievable, the number of people that filled that amphitheater and the boats that were out there. There were several times, there was seven, eight, nine boats, and I think that will grow. But I'm excited to see how it is on the lawn this year in Rossi Park. Are we moving it back there?
We are.
I know, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. We got to be on Rossi Park. But, but that will be fun to see. And a lot of people that I talked to that were just so thankful there was something to do. And I think that will even, you know, start to play off of our water taxi with that.
Oh, absolutely. I think we're going to be. We had people reach out to us from Anna Maria, asking us about that. So that water taxi is definitely going to play a part. And the other piece to last year was we had a phenomenal amount of people. I almost am, thank God, there weren't more because that's a different venue and with the stairs and everything. However, what if you noticed, you didn't see a lot of children. And the, in the year before, when we had done it at Rossi Park, you saw a lot of families coming with kids. So I think this year is going to be phenomenal at Rossi. I do. I think the families are going to come back with their picnics and bring their kids. So we're really excited about it.
No, great job on that last year. I know it was a challenge, but, but and our officers did a great job because there was some walking challenges. People were walking down the railroad tracks trying to find us.
And getting, coming down the stairs.
But no, I'm glad and again, thanks for
You're welcome.
Adjusting that last year.
Yeah, we did. We did. And we're glad we did. It worked out awesome. It worked out awesome. So just before the holidays, you may or may not know that we launched Made in Manatee, an online storefront for local small businesses. This is also grant funded. I encourage you to go to Realize Bradenton to come and do some shopping. You go to realize, go to our website, you'll find it. And we have local, local businesses that have signed up there. So you can shop through them and it gives them the opportunity to get their products online. So we're kind of excited to be offering that to them. And last but not least, through grants and sponsorships, Realize Bradenton is currently recruiting for the next cohort of the Startup Circle Entrepreneurial Program. At the conclusion of this free nine-week program, participants will complete business plans to work from. Applications will be available on website until March 4th and next cohort begins on March 12th. What is to specifically note about the Startup Circle is that we have had many, compared to the numbers you're talking about, of these people coming in wanting to start their own, their own businesses. And they're using the market to test out their market plans. They're using the market, you know, that part-time vendor piece that we allow people to come in. They'll, they'll get a booth. And there are, you'll see, soon we'll be getting some signs so that you'll see the vendors that went through the startup program started their vendors and that they're now at the market. And they're doing very well. They're doing very well. So we're excited about that, too. That's helping the community and small business and business development. So that's kind of, that's kind of our first quarter. Not busy at all. Anybody have any questions?
Questions? Anyone? Or comments?
Good job.
All right, I do have a couple of comments. Saturday, you could tell that the numbers were up because we were walking and we realized we need to get on the sidewalk. So we, because we were going to bricks. But, but so we actually, it was just so tight and it was fun to see. And I think what I've noticed more and more is the younger population that's coming down to it and, and everybody has a bag in their hand. And that's, that's where the vendors or the frienders, you know, really will tell you guys how it's happening. And I think that as we know, if we've gone through things and with COVID and other things that have happened, that really to get to where you, what you guys have done sustainable wise, obviously with an icon, following an icon is always hard and Johnette. But what your staff has done and come through that, you know, with all of it is to be commended. And I think that when you look back, you know, some of the things that happened, you know, we don't want to relive. But the way you've come through it and without Realize Bradenton and the market over the 11, 12 years, City of Bradenton would not be where we're at. And I'll, I'll challenge anybody to that because Realize Bradenton has taken us to that next level, you know, and it's just, it's proud to be a part of that. And in my fourth year as mayor, I'm proud to say that, that you guys have done that for us. And I know this council will agree with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. We really appreciate that and we continue to want to do more.
And we're, and we're right there with you. And thanks for taking over Winter Wonderland. Not taking it over, it wasn't a hostile takeover.
No, 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 no.
It was a good help takeover. And, and we'll work through those issues. There's always first-year stuff and those things are good.
I mean, there is, but overall, I have to say we conquered and, and we did make it through with.
Everybody, everybody was happy that the way it came out.
Wonderful.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, moving on to citizen comment. And I'll read the, our citizen comment portion. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on public hearings at the appropriate time. So at this time, we'll start citizen comment. And I have one card, Bill Sanders. And if you'd please come forward, state your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Bill Sanders, 2502 Riverside Drive. Good morning, Council. Happy Valentine's Day to you and the citizens of our city. In 2018, I walked nearly every street in Bradenton to learn that our infrastructure underground was terrible. And the city was sued under the Clean Water Act to correct. The sidewalks were inferior. The city only spent $75,000 per year for sidewalks. Not nearly enough to maintain or improve. Therefore, I championed the annual amount to $750,000 per year or tenfold. In addition, as Vice Chairman of our CRA, we funded another $500,000 for city sidewalks. Today, I have been contacted by five citizens who have been injured by falls on sidewalks in disrepair. Have we stopped the Bradenton Sidewalk Program? As a citizen of concern, I ask the city administration to communicate with me on this issue to prevent further embarrassment to the city. This is a failure to protect our citizens, especially the elderly in our neighborhoods. I know we have money because we recently gave $300,000 to the EDC on a consent agenda or a 400% increase in their funding. Then an appointment of Kirk Landerfield, who ran for city council, to the EDC Committee for Input in the city's economic development. I understand cronyism is not illegal, but a longstanding playbook to reward those that agree with the administration of the city. Last week, I testified in Rodney Jones trial for speaking out on corruption in our city. After I testified, we broke for lunch and I went to my car on Manatee Avenue across from courthouse as my car was blocked by an unmarked police vehicle. After lunch, I went back to the trial and spoke to the judge and concerns of the lack of legal representation and material facts not presented to the jury. I went home to find out two royal palms were removed from my front area. I went home to find out two royal palms, I'm sorry. Two days later, I attended the sentencing of Mr. Jones at 2:30 p.m. I told Dale Brown he was an evil person. The next morning at 10 a.m., 500 gallons of sewage spilled to occur in front of my home in the city of Bradenton. It was reported to the state, but not the community. The good of my report is this to you. Count three of the trial of the Manatee jury found Rodney Jones not guilty of telling Dale Brown his head would be put on a stick. The jury evidently considers this a no-see item and found Rodney Jones not guilty. I respect the election process. However, Florida has a resign-to-run law. This process is in question is Dale Brown. You filed to run before you resigned. Clearly a violation of Florida law. I do not consider you a legitimate man.
Thank you. We have no other comments listed. Is, Mr. Perry, the one thing I would like you to answer, too, is there was a misstatement in that of $300,000 to the EDC. We did not raise our budget to $300,000 to the EDC. Right.
I was, I don't believe it was stated that way to come. The insinuation was it was.
Right. And I, you're out of order. If you've, you've already had your time. But you're, you're walking out of the room, sir. We're going to discuss it now. We're going to discuss it now. Officer, would you please take care of the disrupt, disruption? The innuendos and the lies that are basically said during a citizen comment, you know, are not going to be addressed in this. But, but if any citizen wants to question anything, you can call any of our council people at any time. You can call any of us. And the problem is, is when somebody gets on social media and just says fake or false information with no consequences, it's got to be addressed. And, you know, it's a, we did raise it as a budget item to go up to start some of the EDC situations in our city, economic development. And Mr. Perry, I'd like you to address that a little more, what we're going to get out of that and the possibilities.
One of the key things we're trying to look at is an Economic Development Action Plan to identify those areas of the city that present us the best opportunity for both retention and expansion of economic opportunities. We're not like the county that has a lot of land to the east for different types of distribution centers or residential development or manufacturing, things like that. And to that extent, we're very unique. And we're asking EDC to look at the various opportunities that are before us. A lot of it has a connectivity to the built environment. Obviously, we're on a capital expansion situation in the city. There's a lot of private development. And how do we bring a synergy to that? I think it's a fairly modest amount. I remember Counselor Roth had asked me if I wanted to set up an economic development department. And I said unless you had about a million and a half dollars, I didn't think that we could do this. So this is really dipping our toe into the water in that regard.
Right. And like you said, when we have to start a department, you have to hire several staff members. You have to go through retirement programs. You have to do insurance. You have to do all of that. By being able to work smartly in government by utilizing services that are in our town that are already doing those services, you can do it at a lesser cost. So someone to put out innuendos that, and then walk out of the room and not even give an opportunity to hear an answer or even, I've never got an email from anybody asking me about that or questioning it. So we'll go through it. And the other stuff is just propaganda. You know, it's, it's the stuff that we have to deal with and, and we'll take it, you know, because we can answer every question and be able to. Mrs. Coachman?
Yeah, I just want to say something in terms of about the money that was spewed about sidewalks. And I think CRA was also mentioned in city. That money is allocated for sidewalks, but some is for new, for new sidewalks and some is to repair. It's not all collectively something we can just go and fix all the sidewalks.
That's a very good point. I'd also point out with the sidewalk initiative, I had actually texted Ms. Clay back to get a quick dump on, you know, what we've done with sidewalks. And it's about a million dollars a year, each year over the last three years. And that is our base contribution to also things like the school safety program that we try to leverage with the state DOT over by Manatee High School. A lot of the funding that was, that was put into that area for improvements was related to that. And so we look at where we, the highest need is for repair replacement, as Councilwoman Coachman was pointing out. We also look for supplemental opportunities where we can leverage city money with, with state money or other funds.
And I don't know if any of you have gotten the phone calls, but you're on down Manatee Avenue right now, working with the state. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I was just going to say, they're fixing a lot of sidewalks around this city and we're, and that may be DOT, but we worked with them to get that process done and, you know, through the MPO, some, some of it. And so to say that we're not doing any sidewalk repairs, again, is false information that's being put out there. So Ms. Coker, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, if you don't mind. That was one of the things I was going to bring up, was Manatee Avenue. And I have had calls about that. And, and I've had calls from the Wears Creek neighborhood that they love the new sidewalks that they're getting there. And I'm sure that it's going on elsewhere in the city. But I feel like we're almost being pulled into a trap here. Someone was voted out because they didn't like the way they did things. We set the agenda. And yes, we have to respond to comments, but I think publicly like this is, is, it's just disruptive.
And then again, that's the makeup of an individual, so.
Mayor.
Yes, yes. Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to speak to a couple of substantive things. I agree with you, Councilwoman Coker, as to the, you know, how much we should address this. But just as far as activities going on, that lift station, I am very familiar with that lift station. I walk by it almost daily and it's being phased out. We are currently, you know, just point of clarification, we are expanding the lift station. That is about three blocks to the south of that lift station and we are eliminating that lift station. So it is, you know, it has problems. There's a generator out there right now. But it's being addressed by way of the project to expand the lift station, which I'm very excited about. And then also just point out that we just recently prioritize the complete street project for Second Avenue, which will include street lighting and sidewalks and designated bike lanes. And that's also in that immediate area. So I'm, you know, while, like, we always say the work is slow, but I do steadily see us making progress. And one thing I was going to say by my ward comments was the availability of federal funding, which Mr. Perry and I have had some discussion about. And I wanted to make sure I brought it up in the, to y'all's attention in ward comments, that there is funding available and that I, you know, it's been one of my focuses to bring that to the attention of administration whenever we have that opportunity to maybe be a part of a coalition with other planning organizations be a part of a coalition with other planning organizations and try to bring as much of those funds to our area as possible. So we're.
And I do agree with both of you about the gaslighting. That's something somebody has done for a long time, and it's in there. And obviously, you know, it's, this is, it's not appropriate to address some of that stuff. And it's an election year, and we know that's out there. But you've seen how we have been very consistent, very open, and very willing to debate things and go through them. And our budget is very open. And we're willing to go through it. And I'm willing to stand it up against anybody's budget for accountability for the citizens. And I think that's important to address. And so when somebody gaslights and doesn't tell the truth, it needs to be addressed at the time. And we will do that. And the other stuff is propaganda, again. And if there was things that really did happen, we'd be seeing photos of it. So show me the photos and I'll move on. So, all right, moving on to consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Steph is requesting approval of items A through U.
Chair, will entertain a motion?
I will move to adopt the consent agenda, A through P and R through U.
A through P, so you're asking to remove Q?
I just have a quick question about Q.
Okay.
Hold a second.
Okay, and a second by Ms. Coker.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rudisil, since I am included as an appointee of the grievance board, am I allowed to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no financial gain.
There's no financial gain, but I, again, Caesar's wife, Caesar's wife.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve all, removing Q by Ms. Moore and seconded by Ms. Coker. And we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Group five to zero. Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to make sure that the cover page, I was aware that this was coming on the agenda, and I'm happy to see it on the agenda. The projects mentioned in the cover letter, I'm assuming that they're not limited to just these projects because it says including. But I wanted to make sure that the reflections of Manatee request was also in being considered as part of the tree fund transfer.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Williams who's coming up, but probably might have some information about that.
Mr. Peterson was working on it with Ms. Clayback, I believe.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Lance Williams, Chief Operating Officer. I'm sorry, what was your question again? I didn't hear.
I wanted to make sure that there's a list of projects, but it looks like it's representative. And so the reflections of Manatee also made a request for tree preservation board funds. And I wanted to make sure that they were included in this as one of the projects that the funds were going to be used for.
So I'm not aware of their request, but we can make sure that their request is fulfilled. But we're also doing some other.
Right.
Projects in, you know, for that project, or other items for that project. So it'll be kind of more all-inclusive. This was more of, we had these specific areas that needed to have some tree replacements on an urgent level. So we wanted to make sure that we had the funding available for, so Mr. Peterson's group could go ahead and make those replacements.
I think that the reflections was also a tree replacement for a tree that is, I don't know if it's diseased or something, but it's, it is a replacement. And I know Mr. Peterson has already been working with them.
I've got one question before. Is the reflections private property or is it public property?
Um, it is, I'm not totally positive, but my understanding is it's a, it's a nonprofit, not city, public property, is my understanding.
I'd want to make sure we were meeting all legal regulations.
When we use the term reflections, is of course the reflections monument that is on the southwest side. And that's, I believe, part of the city park. And then reflections in the term of, more generically, the Tribute to Angola and that area and the like, I think that's a nonprofit, yeah. So I don't know exactly where this tree is and.
And where it's going to be put.
Where it's going to be put. Perhaps Mr. Peterson.
I'm going to have Mr. Peterson come up and shed some light. Shed some light on the situation.
No pun intended.
But is that in this agenda item?
To clarify.
It wasn't inclusive in the, in the project list, but it actually was the first project that was on the list. Again, the list wasn't, is not all-inclusive.
Okay.
So there is an addendum to the tree fund policy that allows tree maintenance for unsafe trees. And because it is a not-for-profit, somewhat public, historical landmark, it seemed to fit the criteria to be available for the fund.
I just don't want to open up something that, you know, there's some private areas and there's some public areas in that area that we want to make sure we're.
Right, and it was more about safety, hazardous trees, not necessarily replacement, but trimming and removal of hazardous trees, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. All right.
So Chair, will entertain a motion?
I will move to approve consent agenda, item six Q. Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is seven A, first reading of ordinance 4033, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida vacating a portion of a 16-foot east-west alley as shown on the plat of G.O. Gregory subdivision, recorded in Book One, page 236 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, and more particularly described herein, being generally located north of Manatee Avenue East and east of 22nd Street East, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for February 28th.
All right. So that'll be set for February 28th. Nothing else we need to do on that?
No, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk?
We don't have anything listed under new business or unfinished business on the agenda?
Mayor, if I could have indulgence of counsel just to hit on a couple of important.
Perfect. Yes, sir, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Couple of things I wanted to talk about. Appreciate your indulgence, Mayor and Council. The first one is that on February 9th, I sent out a memo that was distributed to Council regarding an emergency procurement for sledge hauling. And pursuant to our emergency procurement, that is to be brought up at the next council meeting. So there's an obligatory commitment to do that. I wanted to tell you the quick story on that. Basically, we use a company to haul our sledge from the water treatment plant. And there's a lot going on with environmental regulations as it relates to the acceptance of different levels of sledge. I guess it's characterized. I didn't know this, but I guess all, all, how do I put this politely? Sledge is not, is not the same sludge, basically. And to that extent, H&amp;H Hauling, who's been a longtime contractor for the city, is caught in the middle of that as far as hauling it and ultimately disposing of it. And so they're really not willing to sign an extended contract until it's settled a little bit through environmental regulatory sources on the sledge itself. And they may require us to do certain things to bring our sledge up to a higher level and the like. But in the meantime, we have to do something with our sledge. And so this, and we had spoken with H&amp;H and asked that, you know, we could do a short-term contract and the like. And they said, look, we'll keep hauling it until we know more information about it. And there might come a time when you have to do something or we have to do something. But this is basically an interim measure to haul the sledge. And so we issued that on Friday, and hopefully we'll make some progress with where we're at on sledge really quickly. That's the sledge issue.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, yeah. I want perhaps Mr. Williams and Brian Cho to come up and Craig Keyes talk a little bit about the plastic bag initiative, just to make it quite clear that where we're at with that from a solid waste perspective and where we're, what we're kind of posturing currently is we have to kind of act quickly to eliminate the use of plastic bags for yard waste, green waste and the like, specifically. I'm sorry?
And paper bags as well.
Yeah, you're right, right, paper bags as well. It's really something that is environmentally mandated as it relates to the processor of that type of waste. And they could manually remove it from the yard waste. But of course, there's a cost to staff it with laborers, with pitchforks that would pull the yard waste and separate the bags and then put the true green waste into the recomposition and the like. But it's strictly related to mandates. You may ask, well, why doesn't the county have to do this right away? The county will eventually have to do that. They have the same contractor that we have, but they're under a contract that's longer than ours. And so we're coming up on a deadline, I believe it's April. And I'll allow, certainly recommend that Mr. Cho and Mr. Keyes talk about that. But that's kind of the overview of it.
Good morning, and happy Valentine's. Say your name, just so we know. Brian Cho, Superintendent for Solid Waste. I've spoken to all of you, but we're glad to see Mr. Mayor on TV last night on the news talking about the regatta. But funny enough, right before him, they had the mayor of City of Tampa talking about this exact same thing and how they've kicked off the exact same program as we have, removing the plastic from the contaminants from the yard waste. We're doing the same thing, no bags, no, no plastic, no bags in our thing. And we all know that when we shred that, it becomes a huge contamination. And so that's why we're meeting the EPA regulations and trying to help our vendor produce a good, clean product that he can, that he can sell on the market. They're currently here if you have any questions for them. If not, that's, that's fine. But that's, that's basically the.
Well, I just think one of the most important things, as Mr. Perry said, and it's going to be messaging to our citizens, that we get out there, that this is not something that the city of Bradenton is doing. This is being mandated, and it depends when your contract with this hauler is up. And ours is up in April, where Manatee County's is up farther down the road. They'll have to do the same thing.
The processor.
The processor, right. So again, this is not a city of Bradenton initiative, and I'm glad you brought it up. You know, if the news media calls me and asks me about it, I'll tell them too. And the mayor of Tampa told them, this is, it's happening all over the state. So we just want our citizens to know that this is something that Brian Cho and the yard waste isn't doing. It's the EPA and regulations that we're all trying to work within.
Yes, and we also have the second bin program. So anyone who wants a second blue bin, because we, we're very green here, we offer the second bin for the first year. They can call our office and they can do. We also have a QR code that will be going out so they can get more information and get numbers as to answer any of their questions. So as of April 1st, no more, no more bagging it, only binging it. And that's what we're asking for. We're just bringing it to attention.
Ms. Coachman? I go ahead.
I just had a question. You just mentioned about a QR code in terms of how citizens can get the information. Are there going to be other ways we're informing them?
Yes, we're putting it out on the media. We're putting out on door tags. Everyone will get a door tag. There'll be lawn signs on all the HOAs. I'm also meeting with all the HOA people's associations so that we can get the word out. We're also doing it all over, all of the social medias. So we will be hitting this full glass.
That was my question. Great minds think alike.
Ms. Moore?
I understand that we're going to be news blasting, and I think that is important and good. But what will happen, I feel like inevitably there's going to be someone that managed to not hear about it and put the bags out. What, will it just remain there or should we put a tag on that?
Any bags, any bags that, at first, any bags that are left out, they will be left at the curb and they'll be picked up with their garbage. And the garbage team will pick it up. But that homeowner will also get a notification as to the update, as to no more bags in our yard waste.
A gentle notice.
Yes, yes. So we, so we have, we have mechanisms in place that anyone slips through the cracks, we'll still be able to capture, capture and inform.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I might suggest that we remind people of the changes that we made before about bundling and everything, because I've recently noticed quite a bit in my area of just piles of things. Again, and it seems like they're being, they're not being picked up. I don't know if we give them a notice as to why we aren't picking that up, but I just would suggest that we remind them about that.
Yes, ma'am. And we are continuing to still pick up bundles and piles as a regular bulk item pickup.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to just touch on a couple more quick items. The first one is related to the OPAGA request for information. And we compiled that request and provided it to the OPAGA office, basically, for information related to the city of Bradenton. I received some information, inspection of public records requests for information. We provided that to the local, I think it was only one entity that requested it, but we provided that. It's really more public information regarding our budget, our complement of services, our structure, and a whole host of things. And that is a state initiative that we are agnostic about, and we have an obligation to comply with our partners at the state and the press and everything else. And we'll continue to do that. We are not going to take any editorial position at all from the administration perspective. And, you know, I imagine that at some point, you may be questioned about it, but that's on y'all's prerogative to handle. So I'll just move on from that, if that's okay.
Sure.
Yep. One of the, the last things I want to talk about is something that was kind of mentioned a little bit earlier, which is infrastructure. And I wanted to specifically touch on a few things of good news regarding supplemental funding from the state. We received back in December and there, in the ensuing months since then, the forms that really we received about $6 million in state DEP grants to hit on some of these, you know, worn infrastructure, aged infrastructure issues. Specifically, out of the $5.7 million grant, Lift Station Eight, which is of course right down on the waterfront here, a little bit.
West.
Yeah, west, I'm sorry. I lose my bearing sometimes. A little bit west of the marina is Lift Station Eight. And its proximity to the water is fairly jeopardizing to the environment. If you remember after Hurricane Ian, we had a fault at that station, and there was spillage into the water related to the valve systems and connection systems that were in there. We've spent some money on temporary repair of it, but we're going to relocate it off the water, basically, and move it back to some property we have a little bit away from that. It's a fairly expensive undertaking. It's $3.8 million. So when you hear about lift stations and what Councilmore, those are excellent comments about some of the repairs being done into Ward Four, there, it's expensive. And we have an initiative to really repair and really replace most of our 65 different lift stations throughout the city. And some of them go back for being very aged. Most of them aren't that as expensive to do. I think on average, you're probably looking at about somewhere between $300 and $400,000 per lift station. I had asked Kim Clayback that question, and that was the number I thought that she had given me. But we're continuing to deal with those aged infrastructure issues. In Ward Five, there's a drainage improvement project that we received funding for that's $2,050,000. And so, you know, we're constantly dealing with drainage and stormwater and those issues. They also can implicate the Clean Water Act. They're regulated in what's called an MS4 permit. Seth Jones is in the back of the room. He's one of the best engineers we work with, had retired, came back to the city. He's doing a lot of work for us in that regard as well, on our MS4 permit and the like. But we're, I guess, moving back to some of the comments earlier, when you think about our ability to get $5 million, $6 million in loans, not loans, in grants, direct grants, a lot of that is through the government affairs process of creating good relationships between our staff, our electeds, our administrators, with the state-level people at the various executive agencies. In this case, most of it's under resiliency, that would be DEP and the governor's office too, who administers that. It's really important to forge those relationships and to try to use some of those state taxes that go to Tallahassee back here into the city of Bradenton. And we have, I think, about $12 million in direct appropriations requests in right now that are still in the budget. And, you know, we're getting into the final times of the state legislative session. We just got requested by the governor's office for a consideration of $5 million in traffic improvements and the like. And it's interesting, because we've taken a little bit better approach for that, to the extent of, we have state roads, and a lot of the traffic congestion that's created here is created by virtue of pass-through traffic. People that aren't particularly going to use Bradenton services come to Bradenton and utilize our beautiful city and see how great people. But it creates problems on our local roads. And so when we go to Tallahassee and they say, well, isn't this a local initiative? Why would you ask the state to pay for it? Well, the impact is really from state activities, transportation and the like. So we have to integrate that all together. We have not had a transportation program at the Public Works Department for the city of Bradenton that I know of. And I've talked with a lot of our folks. It really falls into the bailiwick of Ms. Clayback and our Engineering Technical Services Department, who will be handling waste, you know, stormwater one moment, wastewater the next, water distribution, electrical engineering, everything in between. And by when she has a little extra time, she'll sit on the, with the MPO, you know, as our technical advisor with our mayor, who's the chair of it, and the like. Well, we got, we reassess things, and we were lucky to get someone with some really good civil engineering experience, particularly in the traffic engineering perspective that we're, that's from the area locally here in Sarasota, Manatee County. And he's going to be joining us and probably starting up that transportation type of engineering. And it's, it's hard to find people with really good skills in that. We, in my prior job, we'd always have trouble finding transit engineers that could do that, transportation, not transit, and the like. So we want to take more of an active role, is my point, both at the legislature and getting the funding, working with our partners, as well as having the bandwidth with our own city to engage in that stuff because of the impact on local roads. And we have pretty good success with that. We're hopeful about that $12 million. It's an array of different transportation improvements, as well as other types of improvements. A lot of it is on the environmental infrastructure side that deals with resiliency or water collection and treatment and the like. And we're, you know, we're putting a lot of effort into something. And, you know, it's like most things that are kind of distorted, or I won't call them falsities. The best way to tell a falsity is take the truth, just sprinkle a little misinformation on it. That's what I used to say when I was a prosecutor. It's no different when someone comes up to this podium. And the truth is, is that. And the truth is, is that we haven't probably been keeping up with infrastructure, like a lot of local governments. But the reality is, is that we have a very aggressive commit, you know, board and council that has seen the need for that with an administration, with our technical experts at the department that are busting it every day to play catch-up. And we're doing a pretty good job. You can't fix in 20 days, or 20 months, or 20 weeks what took 20 years to create. And it's no one's fault. It is where we are. But my hat goes off to you for taking the lead as our electeds and giving us the latitude to do things like deal with the state, to do things like hire additional support staff, to do things like assess really where we're at and where we want to be. That's courage. That's leadership, and I appreciate it from my perspective. So with that, I'll sit down and we'll move to the rest of the meeting.
Well, thank you, Mr. Perry. And that's one of the things that, that I was going to say later, but I just think that he hit it spot on, that the leadership, not only from this council and our administrative staff all the way down from you, Mr. Perry, is taking some of those bold steps that we need to do now. And our city will be 121 years old in May, and we're proud of that history. But we also have some aging infrastructure that we have to deal with now. And I think that some of the things, whether it was hiring a lobbyist a few years ago, whether it was, was working through getting you, Mr. Perry, and changing some of the thoughts on what we're going to do to take that proactive step to make a difference. And, you know, and it's whether it's getting the fire truck, whether it's getting the right police cars, whether it's getting with our public safety and working through those things. And, and when somebody comes up and throws out falsehoods about those things, yeah, we want to defend what we've done, and we want to work through what we've done. So again, we're going to be that bold council that's going to say, "How are we going to make it better for the generations to come?" A lot of us didn't have anything to do with what's happened, but we've got to work towards that next generation, and that's important. And if that is something that, that, you know, people want to talk about and ask us about, we're glad to talk about it, because we do have a plan. And we are, you know, at times, and I look at out in the audience right now, and it's almost every person out there is a staff member. And, you know, we are taking bold steps, and we are holding you to task, but you wouldn't want to be in your position if you weren't being held to task to make it better for what your everyday job is. So from my standpoint, and I'll speak on behalf of the council, if it's all right, we thank you for every day. And that's important to know, that questions or asking why we do something isn't questioning what you do, it's how we can make it better for you to serve our citizens. So that's important to us every day. And some of the minutia that comes in here, spew it at me all you want. I know our city's going to be better for our children and our grandchildren, and that's the most important thing. So, Madam Clerk, anything else before we go to council reports?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Council reports will start in Ward 4.
Okay, great. Yes, so I, as I intimated before, Monday for me was a Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council Day, and I'm very excited to see with their restructuring of their staff and their administration, the focus is 100% trying to form coalitions within the Tampa Bay region in order to be stronger candidates for federal funding, for very specifically, things that we need here in the city, which is flood mitigation, infrastructure projects. And so, Mr. Perry and Mr. Williams and I have had somewhat brief conversations, but I just want to bring it to y'all's attention that I'm trying to push grant opportunity information to staff so that we can take advantage of it. And I'm very excited about the recent hires of the two engineers, because I think that will help Ms. Clayback with, you know, her workload and the hopes that we're moving forward with having staff that can have the time to apply for the grants and participate in those projects. So that's just information for you guys to know that I'm talking to them about that, and hopefully everyone would kind of get behind it. And, and just my also kudos for the recent hires and hoping that we continue that trajectory of having our robust Public Works Department so that we can meet, you know, face the challenges of growing. And I think you put it well with trying to fix what has taken 20 years to happen is no small feat. So I, Mr. Cho left, or, and I'm not sure if it falls in within his purview or Mr. Peterson's, but I just wanted to thank Public Works for the speed with which they, seemingly small thing, but adding a dog waste container to a neighbor, a couple of neighborhoods that asked for it. So that was very fast, and as we say, government works slowly, so I was very delighted to see that something happened very quickly. I am excited about the workshop on April 6th. I just want to push out there in case, you know...
March 6th.
Or March 6th, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you. So I hope people, you know, listen in or attend to what I'm sure will be an interesting and exciting conversation. And I believe that that is it for me.
All right, thank you, Ms. Coachman.
Okay, so much of good stuff has been discussed and trying to clarify some things, so I'll just say ditto to most. You're so right. Our Public Works Department, they really do strive to get things done if they can in a quick manner. But I also have to say, and I agree with you, Mayor, our staff, everyone, every department works hard every day to try to speed up the process that, you know, government tends to slow down. And also, just also say to our fire department and our police department, I get to see you guys work a lot. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I definitely get to see how hard you work and how you keep the public safe as well. But on another note, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. And just to say that the month of February is definitely full of love. It's Black History Month, and it's such a great time to talk about the rich history of the black culture. It's not all negative. And just to be a part of a lot of the events, so I don't have any to really just recommend that you all attend, but just look in social media for any of the events that you might want to attend. But obviously, this weekend, we have a lot, a lot of things going on, so I'm just going to say Happy Valentine's Day, and everyone enjoy this wonderful weekend full of fun.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Oh, yes. First off, you know, I sometimes take it for granted, but there are people that don't know, this is a dirt on my forehead, that today is Ash Wednesday, which is a very holy day for a lot of people, but it marks the beginning of the time of Lent. And I hope that everyone takes an opportunity to renew themselves in their faith, that this is a very holy time of year for a lot of people. I also, gosh, the calendar, so much great stuff going on, and I would encourage that you follow the city of Bradenton on Facebook, especially for this weekend. And I want everybody to enjoy the festivities and understand that with all that's going on, there's going to be a lot of increased congestion on the road. So kind of pack your patience, and please remember, we are the friendly city for a reason, and let's, let's get through all this. And so plan ahead. And one last thing about the negative, I think you nailed it when you called it gaslighting. If you're getting your, your facts from Nextdoor and Facebook, I would encourage you to reach out to us, because we're all here for public service, and some of the things that are said, it's hard. It's hard to hear it and not, you know... Anyhow, I just would encourage, if you've got a question, please reach out to, at least me, I'm happy, my phone number's everywhere, my cellphone, I'm happy to, to talk to people. But now that we're all working very hard, and we have great staff with, that are committed to making Bradenton the best place to live, and we're doing a good job, I think.
Thank you.
That's it.
Vice Mayor Barnaby?
Oh, okay. Well, I've got, I've got a long list. First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody that got FreeBee up and running, CRA and our, our staff here as well. If you're not aware of what FreeBee is, it is a freed rideshare program throughout the downtown. So if you, let's, let's say you've got somebody, you live on the west side of town, you're meeting somebody from the east side of town, go ahead and park in our free parking garage, and then take FreeBee down to LeCom, take FreeBee down to Motorworks, or any of the businesses in the Village of the Arts. And it's, it's one less car on the road there, as far as that, and you don't have to worry about parking. So I highly recommend that. And I want to thank the staff, Public Works staff, and utility billing staff that got a project done in my ward on Riverview Boulevard dealing with a seawall and a massive amount of what is called weep holes. And I just appreciate that, because that will keep the flooding out of, out of that area and off the street, so our street should last longer as well. Let's see, want to thank Shamika Standiford of our staff for the employee event, the employee appreciation event that she put together on behalf of, of the mayor and council, because that was, it was, I thought it was wonderful, and I hope that we do it every year. I think that's something that we all want to see, and the mayor's been pushing for it, so I think that is terrific. Let me see what else I've got. The LPGA, I did not go to the event, but I had fun flipping the TV channels and going and seeing our Bradenton Country Club, and they kept talking about here in Bradenton and here in Bradenton. And the, the club and the course looked great. I want to say it was kind, there was one shot with one of the Ts where you see West Braden Baptist Church, and it sure did look majestic as heck. I mean, I thought it was fabulous. So to the Country Club and to everybody that put that together, thank you, and I'd love to see it come back. And if you bring it back, I promise I'll go next time. Let me see, we've got Happy Valentine's Day to everybody, and wanted to say, there's a quote that is attributed to Mark Twain, but I believe it's, it's really from Jonathan Swift, that says, "A lie can travel halfway around the world while the truth is still putting its shoes on." And I'll just leave that there. And want to give my family, and I think everyone's deepest sympathy to Mr. Rudisil on the passing of your dad. Your dad was a legend. Worked in the schools for many years, raised a very fine son. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. One of the things that was brought up earlier about spring on EDC, and I think Mr. Perry touched on creating a, potentially creating a whole new department, really. One thing I've said to any citizen who calls and asks, "Well, why aren't you getting this done?" Well, because we have professionals in the city who do great work, but we can also lean on community partners like the EDC. And if we contract out and have them do that work for us, that's all going to benefit all of these citizens. So it's, just want to thank all our employees again for that. One thing, we get the updates from the, from Chief Bevan. Seems like a lot of times, they have information on pedestrian crashes and very often fatalities. And I know from my time with the police department, that this area, and just from living here, this area, Manatee, into Sarasota counties, is always near the top of the state for fatalities. Again, just this past week, we had one. Always be alert, especially in areas where there's high pedestrian activity, like Tammy Amey Trail, or anywhere downtown, or First Street. There's, we've lost a lot of people that, granted, and I'm talking more to them than I am the drivers, use crosswalks, use, go the extra half-block and cross at a light, please. It's, it's for your own benefit, especially, it really infuriated me to know that someone couldn't go not even a half-block on 8th Avenue where this last fatality was, because they crossed mid-block. DOT came in, put those very bright lights in, but it's designed for pedestrian safety. There's a whole idea behind it, and we really need people to, I know the police department tries to educate as much as they can in communities, but maybe some type of social media campaign that we can do with the city, and I'm sure that the state has something out there we can do. Now, some happy stuff. You got a regatta. So this weekend, you got a regatta, you also probably got to bring a raincoat, but, and also, welcome back to the Pirates. The Pirates, the regatta is going to transition right into the Pirates Fan Fest downtown, or the Pepper Alley downtown. So hopefully, everybody can stay in the downtown area for all that. Happy Valentine's Day to my darling Maria. I miss you. And there's a quote that I'm not going to attribute to Mark Twain or anybody else, but to Coach Lee Corso. When you lose, say little; when you win, say less.
Thank you. Yeah, and basically agree with everything that was said and going on. One thing with our employee recognition, we had almost 8,000 years of employees recognized the other day. And it's amazing to see, and, you know, had one over 41, 42 years, and Shamika did a great job at setting it up. It's something I asked her probably two or three years ago, and, and working at it, and just said something that I just felt that, you know, for us as a council and going through things, that it would be a great celebration. And through the HR department, she, not only when you walked in the room, was it a wow factor, it was just a wow factor and everything that happened. And I think I saw some sparkles in some of our employees' eyes that it was well worth doing, because you serve a city for 42 years, you love your job. And, you know, so that was great to see. This weekend, it's been a busy week already for it, but you got a regatta, as Councilwoman Kramer said, and, and it's the ninth annual, and we can say annual on that one, because that's something that has definitely, definitely been something that very few things go that long and be that successful. So we're proud of, well, how the city of Bradenton, 10 years ago, because we did have to skip one because of COVID, but 10 years ago, that council, which I was included on, you know, really fought to get that, and it's, it's really supported through tourist tax and the TDC. So, you know, we really have grown that, and it's exciting to see. Actually, this year's the first year it's going to have a Friday night public event, so that's fun to see. And go to our website, I think, I don't know if it's up yet, but you'll see the route for where the Clydesdales and the timing of what they're going to do to start out the whole thing. It's, you know, Super Bowl slowed them getting here a little bit. I don't know if it's the exact Clydesdales, maybe not, but it's the Clydesdales from the East Coast, but, but still part of the whole situation, so. And then going into Friday night at Rossi Park with a band of music in there, and then Saturday all day, and again, tying it into the Pirates Fest or Pepper Alley as a whole weekend. And oh, in between all of that, they will have the market, you know, so that's going to be seeing the number of people downtown. So as Councilwoman Coker said, you know, kind of pack some patience as you're trying to get somewhere, because the Green Bridge will be closed all day Saturday. About 4 o'clock in the morning, I think it starts on until later in the evening. But the Drone Show will be Friday night on River Walk down by Rossi Park. So there won't be a fireworks show Saturday night, so we're hoping to get the bridge open a little earlier for some of the traffic going out. But, but the Drone Show, you know, wind-related, is cooled a little bit. We saw last year, and then unfortunately, Saturday night, it wasn't. But we're excited about that and just keeping the things going. And as, as everyone has said, you know, it's about doing the right thing for the right reason, especially when nobody's looking. And everybody up here is doing that, so we continue to do that and, and working hard. Mr. Perry, any staff, other staff that would like to speak or talk, or?
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams and Ms. Singer?
I forgot something, but they might be speaking to it.
Good morning again. So I know I usually don't talk a lot in the council meetings, but one of the things I wanted to say, in kind of the spirit of talking about the staff and the benefits that, that we have here and the...
we have here and the assets that we have here. So in the last several months, I've had the opportunity to work pretty much with every department, you know, that we have. And I can tell you that I'm very proud to work with the staff that we have. I mean, the dedication is a lot of what you don't see, the after-hours, the weekends, the time and the energy spent to be put in. So from planning community development to Public Works, to purchasing, to utility building, to human resources, accounting, finance, obviously. But it, it really is just, it's a great group of people. And I know specifically with Public Works, I've spent a lot of time with them recently, and they're all very excited about what the future holds and the possibilities. So for some, for a citizen to come up here and say that there's corruption is absolutely absurd. So I just felt it was my time to finally speak up on behalf of the staff because they put in a lot of effort and you guys should be proud, and I know you are, and very supportive of, of who we have. And I really can't speak any more highly of every single one of them.
Well, I think as this diocese sits right now, we are very supportive and again, very grateful for the years and the service. And I don't know that that was the last dais before the election. So, so, and I hope the staff sees that, and I feel they do, you know? And so I appreciate you saying that.
Very much a collaborative effort all the way around, so.
Thank you. We didn't have to have your staff come up much today. It was kind of quiet from that standpoint.
Yeah, wait till next time. We're moving forward on the visioning project. We've been at the last two markets with StanTech. StanTech is going to be there again this Saturday, weather permitting. And then we're kicking off into public meetings the week of the 26th of this month. There may be some changes in venues, but that's all being publicized through the website that they've set up. And we're promoting that through QR code and flyers and, and postcards. So we'll be, make sure that, to let you know of exactly where those events are occurring and the times they're occurring and so that you can attend those if you choose to. And we'll keep you updated on that. That'll be followed up with a citywide online survey so that anybody who wasn't able to attend any of the events can still have their input on the city's future and the comprehensive plan. So with that, we'll keep you updated.
All right, Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, Ms. Singer, I had someone say that they don't have a computer at home, they do a lot of stuff on their phone. And with a QR code, how, how do they, how do they do the QR code with their phone when they're using their phone? So I'm just questioning with the survey if we might be able to put a link.
We will, we will. And I believe for our city's newsletter, she's imported a link on that as well.
Super.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and just comment to that, this past weekend at the market, you know, we had a lot of our staff there and, and looked like they were having fun in shorts. So it was fun to see. One comment I-
I wanted to comment because we do a Monday meeting and Greg Galang had a rather entertaining experience. It was visioning, of course. And he said that he was solicited about six times about where he could get his, people could get their eye examinations. And continuously, I said, next time we'll get you a lab coat. And, yeah, yeah.
And just a final comment, I think with, there's several people in this room that we sat together for about four hours, five hours yesterday. Some, one individual meeting that we came together with a citizen and with a bunch of staff members that were trying to figure out a water problem. And it was good to get all of us in the room with that individual because, you know, it's not a he said, she said thing. It was about how do we figure out where we're going and how we fix things? Because it's easy for somebody, whether it's on our side or their side, to say, it's not my fault, it's somebody else's fault. But that doesn't solve the situation. Well, with great staff, great interaction with those, and I was glad that we were able to work out that meeting quickly, we were able to solve the problem, you know? And it wasn't anybody's fault. It was just a situation that worked out. And that's something that, you know, that you've always seen. And I know up here, you call any of us, we're going to call you back. You email us, I'm going to call you back. I'm not going, I'll email you back, but it's going to be a phone call because we can solve an issue that doesn't become more of a, as a situation that doesn't become an issue months down the road. So, and, but again, that was great to see and great collaboration for, down the road. And then we had another meeting for almost four hours, it ended up being, that was talking about some progress in the city with City Park. So that's some stuff, we'll get more information out and how that's going. And as I say a lot, Ms. Moore said today, it's slow. But slow to me is gas pedal on and let's go, you know? And I mean, again, it's not like a normal business, as Ms. Barnaby said, but we can be business-like. And that's what we've got to do and will continue to do and not apologize for moving things along. Because what that's going to do, and, and talking about, especially Ms. Coachman's area, is we're saving three and four-year-olds' lives down the road. And if we can do that, I'll take all the heat and arrows you want to throw at me. Thank you. We'll be adjourned.